All right, I'm all just kind of populated. All right, it's 7:09 for a seven o'clock meeting. So, I'd like to call Reverend Jane Gaylor up to give our invocation, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. I read from First Corinthians 13, verse 12. "For now we see in a mirror dimly, but then we will see face to face. Now I know only in part; then I will know fully, even as I have been fully known." All of us at one time or another need the gift of new vision, for there are times that each of us lacks the ability to see our own or others' true beauty. Jesus longs to take the scales from our eyes that can imprison us in our darkness, that keep us from enjoying the brilliance of the world and of the people around us. When we see clearly, we are more able to act rightly. As you are comfortable, I invite you to join me in prayer. We come to you, God, with open hearts and outstretched arms, for we need your vision in our lives. It is only your grace that allows us to see as you would have us see. It is your sight given to us that makes us aware of the blessings you have bestowed on us and opened our eyes to the needs of others with whom we come in contact. Let us not see as the world sees, for far too often it is oblivious to others' material or spiritual poverty. Along with our eyes transform our hearts. Stretch them, soften them, that we may be responsive to the urgent cries of those who suffer in our midst. We thank you for your willingness to change our perception of all we see, so that joyfully we can claim the freedom that is our rightful inheritance. Catch us when we stumble and fall due to our blindness and lead us forward to truth and new life. Help us to trust that the light of your spirit will illuminate our path, so that together we may walk with purpose and conviction. And we lift our prayers to you this night, oh God, God of love, amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Jane. Okay, I'd like to call tonight's county councilman September 16th to order it. That one's not working, 7:12. Megan?
Davis, here. Lampy?
Here.
Berg?
Here.
Barts? Blanke?
Here.
Smith? Arnett?
Here.
Wetzel?
Yeah.
Mildenhour?
Okay, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce our new city attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the me and Ms. from September 2nd. Make a motion to approve as written. Motion by Blanke.
Second.
Second by Davis, okay. All fair say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, next we have comments and suggestions from citizens present. Please state your name and address and come to the podium, they'll up to three minutes. There, sir.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Griggs, and my wife and I live at 517 Rockview Court in Watertown, which is immediately next to Silver Moon Tavern. And we've spoken with Craig and Jamie from Silver Moon Tavern, and we're communicating with them trying to amicably resolve our concerns regarding some of their proposals. And we've also communicated those concerns with our excellent older person, Ken Berg, who's been listening to those concerns as well. And we've lived at 517 Rockview Court since April of 1997. And that entire area is entirely composed of residential properties with the exception of the one business, now Silver Moon Tavern. And when it was Eastgate Inn, then it became Settlers Bay, and then eventually On the Rock Restaurant. It was wonderful to have a restaurant next door, it was fine to have a restaurant that served alcohol. When Settlers Bay was starting its operation back in 1988, there was a conditional use permit process, and the city and Settlers Bay and the neighbors next door and all around, in the whole area, all came to an agreement. And in the end, what happened is there was outside dining, but it was restricted to 50 people, and it was fenced in, and there was no outdoor music. And we and all of the other neighbors around us have been blessed to live in this quiet neighborhood. We see the eagles nearly every day during the summer, all kinds of other wildlife, and it's just a wonderful, pristine place to live. And that's all we're hoping to do, is to preserve that character. Moreover, my wife and I operate an Airbnb business licensed through the city, and that's known as Rock River Haven. And we represent it to be what it is, a beautiful, quiet place to spend time. And we've had many guests over the last several years, and we would like to be able to continue representing it to be a quiet, beautiful place to reside. And so, I understand that more of this is being addressed in an upcoming meeting on the 29th. But I just wanted to draw your attention that our concern is this becoming an outdoor venue with outdoor music. It's my understanding there's an event proposed on October 4th, that there's going to be three different bands. I don't know if they're all going to be outside, or some are going to be outside, some inside, but we know that one is a heavy metal band. We're concerned about the noise. We very much want to preserve the residential character of this beautiful neighborhood. And so, I wanted to draw this concern to your attention, and I encourage you to look at the Facebook page for the Silver Moon Restaurant, so you can see all of the different events that are being proposed. And just wanted to get out in front of this, so thank you very much for your kind attention and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Yes, sir.
My name is Joel Jaeger. I live at 520 Rockview Court, so a neighbor to the Griggses. My parents bought that house in 1987, and it's been a wonderful place for our family to gather. I'm concerned about an event that says 500 to 1,000 people about parking, where are all those vehicles going to go? Rockview Court probably could handle a few, but I'm concerned about that aspect. I share the comments of Andy Griggs. Love to have a great restaurant, would love to have something back there that was there. I'm concerned that this is going to be something different.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger.
Mayor, can we remind comments to fill out a form too?
Oh.
Chris Ross, next.
My name is Reverend Dr. Christopher Ross. I live at 432 West Clover Lane in Cottage Grove, but I work and serve here as pastor of First Congregational United Church of Christ. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I am part of the local group known as building a welcoming Watertown, first begun by four Watertown area congregations. I'm not going to read scripture verses to you tonight. Instead, I'd like to cut to the heart of the matter. Whenever someone asks me what I'm up to in Watertown, and I mentioned this warming shelter project, and this has happened repeatedly, they begin nodding as if such a need is a no-brainer. I explain that we're not trying to get a full homeless shelter, that we're not asking for anything new to be built, that we're trying to start small. I tell them that we've been trying to make headway with the city by proposing a partnership in which the city opens space it already has and is not using. And we provide volunteers willing to be trained to staff it when it's below freezing outside. That's it. You should see the shock on people's faces when I talk about some of the runaround we've encountered, and how some of our leaders clearly just don't want to see this project happen. And then the jaws drop when I add, "Oh, yeah, and we had two people freeze to death last winter." I ask you to please take a step back and realize how simple this proposal really is, and yet how it could literally save lives. We don't think that offering this bare minimum of compassion, of human decency, should be left to any religious groups known for exploitation or fraud. We would rather have a partnership with the city because we want oversight based in best practices and to be able to offer assurance of available appropriate resources. And we think we owe our siblings better than a choice between risking the cold or enduring religious manipulation. We hope our community, as a true community, can come together and rise to this occasion to care for our people. Doing the right thing here is not really controversial at all, and should be an easy choice. And so, as we've shared before, whether it's somehow grafted onto an emergency plan, or comes as a separate policy all on its own, we need a real solution soon. It is September, and time is indeed running out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Do you remind anybody that would like to speak to fill a form out? Do you have them, Megan, or?
Yes, I have one more. Margarita Haas.
Margarita Haas, live here in Watertown. So I'm here to support the city's plan for a warming shelter and to share why I oppose building a welcoming Watertowns proposal. So I keep asking myself why an organization that seems so convicted about homelessness hasn't housed any homeless people. I even asked Dr. Ross the very same question, to which he didn't have an answer other than we had sort of looked into it before. However, their handout states that they believe it's the government's job, ipso facto, not theirs. As I've mentioned in the previous meeting, he preached a call-to-action sermon to his congregants regarding their Housing Justice Task Force that they formed. Now, what exactly is housing justice, you might ask? In a nutshell, it's the idea that housing is a human right and no one should ever be homeless. Sounds noble, right? Well, keep in mind that anytime housing or services are considered human rights, others are necessarily obligated to give you said rights. So according to housingjusticeplatform.org, a national social justice nonprofit, housing is a human right, not a commodity to be bought or sold. Everyone should be guaranteed housing, public policy must guarantee basic standard of living, and housing in land should be owned and controlled by the community, so no private property for you. So housing justice dogma doesn't allow for private property, only taxpayer-funded, community-owned housing run by nonprofits, of course, and the government, so in a nutshell, socialism. Now, this idea is not in the Wisconsin or US Constitution. This comes to us by way of the United Nations, just in case you didn't know, which states that a person should be able to claim access to private property if the need arises. And it's the state's responsibility to use regulations to persuade property owners to oblige. Now, how would such a policy work in a free-market economy like we have here in the US? Well, according to proponents of housing justice, you would need to dismantle the current housing structure, and nonprofits would receive funding and policy preferences. But none of this can be completed without a public-private partnership. So again, I ask the question, why is building a welcoming Watertown showing up week after week, sometimes out front chanting shame in protest for this must-have partnership with the city? Why aren't they already doing the work they claim will, quote, "put blood on everybody's hands" if not accomplish? One has to wonder if a temporary warming shelter is simply a compromise for a long-term housing justice goal. After all, this is the plight of faithful social justice adherents. In closing, I believe Watertown is at a crossroads. Moving forward, I hope the council will consider proposals and partnerships with those who believe in our constitution and wish not to change Watertown, but to enhance this beautiful, quiet, and already very welcoming city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Let's check and see if anyone online wanted to speak. Okay, we have our time to speak at the end of the meeting as well. Folks are careful these days. Okay. Next, we have reports. We have the Benson Family Town Square minutes from July 16th, Licensing Board minutes from August 13th, Parks Recreation Enforcement minutes from August 18th, Senior Senate Advisory Board minutes from August 19th, Plan Commission minutes from August 25th, Finance Committee minutes from August 25th, Licensing Board minutes from September 2nd, and Public Safety Welfare minutes from September 3rd. All right, no questions, concerns, and move on then. Communications and recommendations. The employee recognitions. Doug Clemmons, you want to come on up? I'm always asking where this tie-up is Christmas ornaments, but it's bowling balls. We bowl a little bit, last 25 years, I think, Doug?
Thirty?
Yeah, forty-five years.
Forty-five years on service, yeah. A long time. Thanks.
We wanted to recognize Doug Clemmons for 45 years of service here at the Watertown Police Department as an auxiliary officer and as a crossing guard as well. Doug, when I started back in 2001 and met you then, you'd already been here 20 years at that point, so fantastic work. Thank you very much for your excellent service. You might ask, what does an auxiliary officer do? They do all the difficult things that cops don't love doing, so the cops can go have the fun doing the exciting, fun things. So we really value the auxiliary officers that stand out in the street and direct traffic, stand out at crime scenes and protect evidence, visit our events, our parades, all of these things, standing in uniform out there, and that's in Wisconsin weather. Whether it's 10 degrees below zero, whether it's pouring rain, whether it's 95 degrees and hot, Doug's been one of those that's been very consistent, very dependable, very personable, and somebody that I really appreciate and can depend on very much. So Doug, we truly appreciate the sacrificial service that you give to our department and to our city, and want to congratulate you on 45 years. Very much.
To begin with, when I graduated high school, I went in the service, spent three years there, and when I got out, I was looking for a job. Everybody knows probably Watertown Metals, I started there, and I was down there for 41 years till it closed, but I figured, what can I do? I figured, okay, I'll try down here. As an auxiliary officer, I wanted to get into law enforcement, but my knee gave way and I couldn't do that, but just to show you. He's might have heard about it, but stuff I've done out there at Riverfest, Fourth of July. Out of 45 years, I've only made one arrest for somebody down there, and they didn't want to listen to me, so... Down they went on the cuffs, and then one night at Riverfest, 12 at midnight, some guy comes through, and this is the absolute truth. You want me to take him out somewhere on 26th there? And I said, "Sorry, I can't, I gotta stay here." And the guy insisted, "There's food in there." I says, "No, you can't have that." I says, "I radio squad, there's one coming." So then we got, "Are you sure?" "Yeah, yeah." Then all of a sudden he reaches into his pocket, pulls out some marijuana. I'm in uniform. And finally, the squad gets out there, and I had to mention to him about it. So this is what we really go through. I love doing the job. I like to do, keep going, because I like to stay active. That's what I do, the crossing guard, I do this, and I just enjoy it. I am glad you guys are cooperating with us. I'm glad to have these guys by our side. And the mayor, everybody here, I'm just so glad that you guys will stand behind us. Dispatchers, I can't say enough about them, all the regulars that I put up with. When I started on this, we had 32, and it was upstairs somewhere here, since they redid it all. We used to have a monthly meeting and all that, but I just wanted to thank you guys for recognizing me.
Thank you, Doug. Okay. Next, to communications, Watertown Fire Department monthly report for July. Chief's online. If anyone has any questions for her. Ms. Davis?
Chief is online, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, I really appreciated this report, and it was also interesting to see your initial data with the new, is it OEP system?
Yep, OptiCon.
Yep, the OptiCon system. And so, I guess what I'm gathering from the data so far is it's a little too early to tell
Yeah.
the impact that it's having and whether or not it's reducing the call times, response times?
Right, I mean, we had two big changes in a matter of two or three months with us moving there in May and then getting the OptiCon up at the end of July. So that's a kind of a difficult, there's not enough data sets or data points there to really get a good site on. But I've been asked so many times that I decided that now I'm going to split it out. We'll continue tracking it and get regular updates.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I do have one more question.
Yep.
I've had people ask me, and I don't know the answer to it, and the question they have asked is, why, if there are so many emergency calls, what is the rationale or the operational thinking in not hiring just EMS individuals? I know the ones, the individuals we hire are both firefighters and also have the EMT. So what is the, you know, from a management perspective, what's the rationale for that?
That's something we've discussed internally when I first started, and part of the problem is, is we really do need our firefighters as well. With our staffing the way it is, we are short-staffed for firefighting operations as it is. So to add EMS-only persons right now is going to just add more chaos to the scheduling and the management of everything. It's something I'd love to explore in the future, but we really need to bolster our firefighting staffing as well.
Is there, is there anything in the union agreement that would prevent that from happening?
Not necessarily, no. We have our minimum staffing sets and operationally, so there's nothing necessarily with the union that's stopping it. It's just the whole combination of management and really, our first priority is to do staffing for fire response and then EMS. And it's a, it's a topic that's on my radar for future discussions once our staffing increases a little bit yet.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you, Chief. Next, in our new business, review and take action, committee appointments.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Berg?
I'll move for the adoption or the approval of Dave Morsted for housing authority.
Okay, I got a motion by Berg. Second by Lampy. Okay, discussion? I believe we're doing roll call, I think, who was it asked before? Yeah.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanky?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next, in our miscellaneous business, payroll summary, August 6th through August 19th, 2025, and August 20th through September 2nd, 2025. I can do, Ms. Berg? A motion on that one? Okay, we'll do them separate. Okay, motion by Berg? Oh, sorry.
No, I was just going to ask if I could, a comment for clarification.
Sorry, Ms. Berg, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I've brought it up before, and I'm just asking if I could, through either Mark Stevens or a mayor, to give an update and some clarification on two of the categories that we know consistently and typically in every given year, we have some problem with overtime for fire and for police department. But in looking at the payroll summary for August 20th through the 2nd of September, it shows, again, that we have a budget of, on fire, a budget of a hundred and seventy thousand, and right now, we're at two hundred and twenty-five thousand. On police department, it shows we have a budget of a hundred and eighty-three thousand on overtime annual budget, and we are at two hundred and thirteen thousand. So we can do plus and minus, because we have other departments that can actually be below, and therefore, the overall impact can be absorbed and handled. But in looking at this payroll summary, it shows at the bottom that we have so far four hundred and seventy-eight thousand budgeted for these different categories of expenditure by department, and that we have four hundred and eighty-three thousand of actual expenditure. So right now, on the overall budget, categories of expenditure on payroll summary, we are, in this particular time period, we are over the amount, and we are still needing to go through October, November, and December. So just give the clarity and the explanation of how we're going to address this, knowing that we're going to have a significant imbalance at the end of the year.
You're correct, we are over budget, and I estimate that there's probably going to be approximately one hundred thousand additional dollars of over budget between now and the end of the year, based on some calculations that I've done this last week. It is an accurate depiction of where we are in the year, and it is similar in nature to what we were last year as well. So the answer to the question is, other accounts that are under will be what are offsetting these overages, but they are over.
But Mark, you're indicating that you're projecting that at the end of the year, we're going to have a deficit of around a hundred thousand?
Additionally, yes.
But are you saying that it's going to be absorbed by other lower expenditures in other departments to allow for the overall to still stay within?
Yes.
You're saying that. But right now, today, we have an excess of the big picture, and we have three months to go. So you're saying somewhere in the next three months, we're going to get enough on the underside that's going to be able to absorb this excess from those two departments?
Not necessarily just those two departments, but across the entire budget. The hope is that we will have offsetting expenses that are less than budgeted to help afford these. You've caught the two departments that are the primary users of overtime, and it's one of those unfortunate things that I can't stop them from having accidents and incidents that require the overtime.
All right. If you could, Mr. Mayor, can you?
Chief, sorry, Chief want to say something? If that's okay first.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd be happy to explain a little bit of the fire department's situation, if you don't mind, Ken.
Yeah.
We have two folks that were out on long-term FMLA leave, which was eight to twelve weeks in length. We do have an additional member coming up on a longer-term FMLA, and then a couple others as well. So a lot of medical use this year, and then with our staffing, we had only been fully staffed for four months this year. We did lose a new hire in July. We expect to have that position filled in October. But the few others that we've hired over the last year, the supply and demand of fully credentialed firefighter, paramedic driver, operators just doesn't really exist anymore. People are getting hired as firefighter, EMT, and we need them to have the driver-operator certification and paramedic certification to be fully credentialed, to be used in all the positions in our department. That being said, we've had to do hire back to have a driver operator so that we have somebody that can safely drive the apparatus, or hire back to fill the positions of officer because of the lack of credentials.
Yeah, Chief Prower, too.
Sure, just to think about a little bit of what Mark had said about accidents and incidents. We are staffed as law enforcement, just as an industry, at a level that allows us to handle the normal, everyday things that come our way. A crash or two, traffic stop or two, you know, we're talking about dozens of small incidents throughout a day that can go up on the board and wait for the next officer to be available, then they go and handle them, and if they have to push for the next shift to wait, then they do. But whenever a large incident comes, we need way more than our minimums of three or four officers to handle a large incident. In that case, we then depend on overtime. We call extra people in from the next shift, we call detectives in, all of that is overtime money. If we were to staff for the major incidents, to be prepared for them all the time so that we didn't have to use overtime, we would be paying way more money. We'd have a lot of people on normal salary and benefits waiting for the big thing to happen. So it's just not a method that the city has seen fit in the past to staff so that we don't see a large overtime budget every year. So that's a big chunk of it. The other big chunk of it is, whenever we're low on our staffing numbers, then we, again, depend on overtime to bring officers in to work a twelve-hour shift or even longer to try to make up for that. So in this past year, we've been low, and that's just a reality of how we handle those things. So the big chunk that I see in my budget that offsets this is if I'm normally staffed with, let's say, six officers on a particular day, but I'm only able to put three on the street because we don't have enough people to hire for one reason or another, that's a huge amount of salary savings, because salary includes benefits as well. So that even though we end up looking at our overtime increase more than we want it to, that offsets exponentially with salary savings, so that we are easily able to make up the difference on the overtime budget with the amount of savings there is from not having bodies on the street. Now, I don't want that. I do not want us to be deliberately understaffed and paying overtime, overworking our officers so that there's problems along those lines, just so that we can have a huge amount of salary savings. But it's an interesting study, if you just Google a big city like Minneapolis, and look at how much salary savings they have in a year, and then look at their overtime budget, and you will see usually a ratio of like four to one, where it's quite helpful to the city's bottom line to understaff. But again, very detrimental to the community to not have the appropriate number of officers available, very hard on the officers themselves to have to be constantly delusional with overtime to try to cover that.
Thank you, Chief.
Go ahead, Ms. Berg.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments from both chiefs on the comments they made. They make sense. When you look at the dollar amount that we do appropriate for overtime each year, though, are we looking at that number realistically? Is the hundred and seventy thousand for fire and the hundred and eighty-three thousand for police? Is that, at the time that you worked with our mayor and for our finance committee, was that a number that you felt we were going to stay within? Or did you, you didn't knowingly pick that number, knowing it was not going to hold out?
I stayed, this is my first year doing a budget, so I stayed historically centered on where things had been in the past. We have been over in the overtime budget historically for a long time.
Yeah. I recall that, too, but I, we got three months left, and it just seems that, we'll see what it's like at the end of the year, but I hope that, like our finance directors indicating, that we're going to have under amounts in different categories that can absorb this large amount here. Otherwise, we are going to end up needing it out of fund balance. Fund balance will end up having some value here. Otherwise, we're going to contribute to fund balance, but I think we're going to be taking from fund balance. And I think when we do our budget for this next year, I'm on finance committee, so I'm going to look at those numbers realistically, knowing the history of the last few years, and see if we at least are putting in to that budget the right amount. Because if we put in the right amount or closer to the right amount, we'll budget for it, we'll tax for that amount, and we will not build in a structural deficit in our intent to do the budgeting. So I'm...
I think Chief Rainey wanted to speak. Tanya there?
No, yes, I'm fine. Thank you, Chief Prower. I just wanted to piggyback off of him with talking about the larger incidents. As you see, we are tracking our double runs or multiple runs and how many all calls we have. That obviously has contributed to our overtime costs, because we do pay for those folks that do come in for it. And I will also second that, in the past, last year at least, because it's my only year, our understaffing had paid for the overtime for the most part. However, I agree with Chief Prower that it's not the best interest of our staff for that, but it does benefit the city. But we were told to do a zero percent last year as well, so we left it as is, even though we've historically been over.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Davis, the other.
It's okay.
That was good? Okay. Okay, next we'll go to paid invoices, report of August 2025, and cash investments of August 31st, 2025.
Mr. Berg? Yeah, Mr. Stocks, I want to ask on the one that we have on breakdown of the different areas of where these investments are coming from, and it shows the itemization of it, but what's unique is that, why does the fire station have a separate category? I mean, we don't see anything here for police, but we have, I know we've got debt with our fire station. So the debt that actually is, until it's needed, it's invested, and that creates income. But is that typical to recognize that fire station as a separate category there? And if so, when we do reallocate the proceeds from investment, does it go back to those departments then at a later time?
Any of the accounts that are set aside in separate savings accounts through the Wisconsin LGIP have an allocation of interest earnings every month. Why you have that separated is for the fire station construction project, and so when we borrowed the fourteen million dollars, all of it went into that account. And so through the month of August, that's the remaining balance on the construction of the fire station. I have not yet paid all of the bills. We still have a storage building that is starting to be built at this point, so we still have some ongoing bills. But that's the reason why I had separated it into a savings account, knowing that it would be sitting there for over a year's period of time, and because of the separation, then year-to-date, excuse me, to-date, not just year-to-date, but to-date, we've earned about five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of interest on that account to help with some of the expenses of the fire station's construction.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Okay, we'll move on to licenses. A, we have licensing memo to the council. And then B, review and take action application for a Class B mountain liquor license from Silver Moon Watertown LLC, DBA Silver Moon Watertown, James Reich agent, located at sixteen oh one East Gate Drive, for license year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Any motions coming in with conditions of passing inspections and approval of conditional use permit, too?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Barts with those conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Second by Berg?
No, I'm not second, I just, I'm sorry, I thought we had a second. We don't have one.
Second.
Okay, second by Blanky. Sorry, Ms. Berg. Okay. Discussion? Ms. Berg?
All right. This is in my district for the third district. I am in real estate for a living, and I know the importance of a restaurant and having that place occupied. It's been largely empty or vacant and not open for operation for, I don't know, it's either more or roughly less than almost five years. So we've got that kind of a history where we need something to be in that building, providing, you know, entertainment and food and other things that are going to benefit from its being open for operation. I'm happy with the fact that we have, you know, a business that's coming forward here. I'm actually, though, I'm, and I understand what they've, I've seen a little bit, for what it's worth, on Facebook, the fact that they've got this event planned for October 4th. I don't want to be someone killing their plan, but I also, I'm bothered by what appears to be sort of unusual in the method of approvals here, where usually, a conditional use permit, a CUP, is done in advance, and it actually is something that we have at a time when we're taking action like we are. For us to still be, basically, we're approving something on the premise that there's going to be an approval of this conditional use permit on the 29th. You know, that may or may not happen, and if it doesn't, then everything we're doing tonight will be on hold because it's not going to move forward. So that's a little bit the cart before the horse type thing that does bother me about this approach. I went to these meetings tonight at 6:30 and court to 7:00, and they were built with fifteen-minute increments, not realistic for any kind of a real good discussion, more of a procedural type of approval so that they could be then in front of us with the fact that they've been approved. And they were. But I really feel that the discussion on the issues that were raised by different people and in my district, again, that's where I represent people within my third district is, that's part of it. And I've had conversation with more than a few of the people there. They are also very happy, like the Griggs and other people that have come forward so far, making comment about their being happy to have a business and a restaurant there for us, for our city. But the concerns are that it seems like it's a little bit helter-skelter and not quite like it could or should be as a business, opening up. They made reference at that meeting I was at of having five hundred or more people at this special event on the 4th of October. And a lot, from what I can understand, is going to occur in a parking lot area that's going to be basically absorbed for entertainment activity, and yet that is, right now, parking. Now, tonight, it was explained by one of the owners that they're going to have people shuttled over and transferred over in some other way where they will not impact on the need for parking. But that parking area, if it's going to be, for this event especially on the 4th, it's going to be absorbing a lot of what would be a large parking area. And I just think, one of, they talked about fourteen points that had to be reviewed, and if any of those were not satisfactory in approval, then they could be grounds for denying of this. But it asks about if the intended special event or activity would present a grave or unreasonable danger to the health and safety of the persons expected to participate in the event, the neighborhood in which the event will occur, the community as a whole or city property, and resources required to be involved with the proposed event. It looks very tenuous and uncertain as far as this main event that they want to have with people bust in and activity occurring, for it to fit into that piece of land and to actually be able to absorb that without impacting on the neighborhood in any kind of an adverse-type way.
Ms. Berg? Your comments are probably for C, if it's okay, if we can, B is for their regular license for the year?
It applies to... Well, that's fine.
So if we can, I can let you, if we just go with B first, then we're going to go to C, okay? Mr. Lampy?
Mayor, as a, as a point of information here, was, is the motion that's in front of us right now, does that include the conditions that were mentioned in the memo?
For their regular license, yes. The city inspections and the conditional use permit.
Can we get some additional information on the status of the, of the conditional use permit, where that is in the process?
It is going before Plan Commission on a special meeting on September 29th.
We can just take, okay. We'll do a vote on just B only for the year license? All the fair say, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Move on to C then. Review and take action application for temporary premises amendment from Silver Moon Watertown at 1601 East Gate Drive, Agent Jamie Reich on October 4th, 2025, during the hours of 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Okay, on that one, I'll look for a motion. Motion by Lampy. Second by Bartz. Okay. Now open for discussion.
I have a question, is the motion that was just made in the second to allow outside sales as stated in the code with the allowable size in code?
I'm sorry, I'll let Lampy and Bartz decide. Outside sales area will need to follow city code for allowable size unless specific exemption is granted by both the licensing board and county council. If you're okay with those.
So I, the, the motion that, that I made here was to approve the application for the temporary premises amendment with the conditions that include the approval and issuance of the original piece and the outdoor sales areas. My intent actually was probably to stop there because I do have some additional questions on the highlighted piece. So I, I, you know, my, my intent here is basically to take the pieces that are not in the highlighted area, but to stop at the word outdoor sales areas.
Okay. Stop at outside sales area.
Is my second okay with that?
No. Both the, the way I understand it, both licensing board and the safety, public safety approved it with the outside sales area.
The public safety only approved the special event application. We don't approve the temporary, the outside temporary premise amendment.
All right, then I'll correct my comments to saying licensing board approved with the outside area needed to follow or exemption with exemption granted for the outside area.
Okay.
And can you specify what the outside exemption is? So you're going, moving beyond what's stated in the code?
Yeah, the size. The exemption is it, it allows the outside size to exceed the interior size.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I, technically, Mayor, I think my motion was not seconded.
Correct, so we'll have to look for a second for yours first if we don't.
So I think, I think maybe Dan would offer an alternate?
Or right now, I'm not seeing a second, so we're going to wait a second. Wait a, wait a little bit. Is there a second for Mr. Lampy's motion? Okay. I'll then look, entertain it for a different motion. Bartz?
So I'll try this again. So it, motion to approve temporary premises amendment for Silver Moon with the, with the exemption that was granted by licensing board for the outside sales order area to exceed the interior sales area.
And then also the part with the inspections?
With the Class B mountain liquor license and passing the city inspections for the outdoor sales areas.
Okay, we have a motion by Bartz? Mr. Lampy?
I'll second that.
Yeah, second by Lampy, okay. All right, discussion. I'll let Lampy go first, okay?
So I am, I am concerned about the two maps I think we, we looked at here. And I want to make sure that we are essentially approving something that the business can work with and can depend on for the event. The map that is provided on page 77 of the packet shows an area that is contiguous with the building, but seems to be a smaller area than the one that we were just looking at in public safety. So my, I, I guess my, my query is which one did you approve in licensing?
No.
Approve the one that have a little bit of a parking lot behind the building, the left side of the building.
Okay, so to, to clarify here, I want to make sure that, that we're being, that we're being clear for the business here. We are approving the full lot essentially for the special event area. We're approving a smaller area within that for being licensed for alcohol service and consumption. Do you need two maps to define that?
Correct, so the public safety map for the special event area, the drinking only be allowed in the map for the premise amendment.
So the one on 77 is an accurate depiction of alcohol service and consumption?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's that outside area in front of the building as well? So it exceeds the square footage of the building?
Mr. Bartz?
We were told in licensing that they were going to use the parking lot for food trucks and that they wanted to have the food trucks accessible to people with their beverages. They didn't anticipate using the whole parking lot for the food trucks. But that's the big reason for the extra space, the biggest reason for the request for the extra space.
Liquor not served, there are just chances someone have a drink and gain some food, correct? Okay. Mr. Berg, go ahead, sir.
Again, let me ask if I can, the, the language that's in here talks about the fact that the, the serving of alcohol will be largely self-serve type taps. And so what I'm, what I'm, just this approach here, just on, on how they're going to serve the alcohol, I want to ask because the liability seems like it's being given back to the, to the person that comes to the event. If you go to a typical establishment, they have people that serve and they have some responsibility. If, if a lot of this is actually, you're, you're going to pay some type of a fee and by, by paying the fee, you then are entitled to a self-serve type drink, drinking at that approach, that is an invitation for obviously a problem on the part of some people. Now, if you have discipline, it'll be a non-issue. But if you're, the, the whole event, in order for it to work the way they want it, seems to be not involving people, but some kind of a procedure which is basically passing the, again, responsibility back to the individual. I'm asking our chief, our chief Brower, with this approach on, on people going to that type of an event and having whatever fun they have in entertainment and drinking with that approach of, of getting alcohol, does that seem to be of a, a regulation level that you're satisfied with?
Yes, I think we can work with what the licensing board and the public safety welfare and your own committee come up with. We could certainly revisit it if it became an issue.
Mr. Blankie, go ahead.
So just a couple of things. One, we heard some concerns earlier tonight from neighboring citizens. And I'm understanding that they're in a dis, in an area in close proximity to this establishment. But this temporary premises amendment is, as I understand it, for one day only, for October 4th. It's not a permanent premises amendment. I mean, the word temporary, I think defines that for me. And we have similar events at Riverside Park, both for Independence Day and Riverfest. And there are homes in extreme close proximity to that as well. As I understand it, that the music will be ending at 10:00 p.m., which is similar to what those events are required. We have mechanisms in place, both with the licensing board and through the conditional use permit that they'll be required to obtain, that if they don't abide by those regulations, their permits will be pulled. So we have repercussions in place, it's consequences. We're trusting they'll be a responsible business owner and it's in their best interests to be a responsible business owner and abide by the regulations that we put forth. Because if they don't, they've spent a lot of money on renovating that building, from what I've seen, and to lose a liquor license or a conditional use permit and thus not be able to do business is definitely not in their best interest. So I, I don't see an issue with granting this. And of course, with any other business establishment that serves alcohol, we have our police department licensing board that oversees that and they get reports monthly on any issues at those establishments. There's a police report that's given to the licensing board every month where they get what calls to each establishment. And so we have oversight. So I don't necessarily see an issue with a one-day event for, from what I understand, based on their Facebook posts, this is sort of a grand opening type event.
Ms. Davis?
I have a question maybe for Megan. Why are we not doing an outdoor entertainment permit? Why are we doing a temporary premise amendment rather than just an outdoor entertainment permit? Like we would do for the town square?
Do you mean an open container?
Thank, thank you, for open container, yes.
Open containers are only allowed for city parks, city-owned property.
Okay. What I like about the difference there is the open container is generally for a set period of time, one day or a couple of days. Whereas this, it's giving permission for a year.
Correct. No.
Well, why does it say no more than four live events in a year and that it's renewed annually in the documentation?
So that would be for a permanent premise amendment? But a temporary premise amendment still follows those same rules, it's just that part of the code would not apply.
Okay, so what we're looking at, you specifically highlighted the part about the exemption and that was taken from the, the.
The whole code.
The, the, okay, thank you for that clarification.
And the open container kind of allows, they would not have to have that fence, whereas this is a licensed establishment, it would need that fencing.
I understand, thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, go on, Mr. Berg.
Okay, so then, again, just for the clarity of it, you're, you're indicating to us tonight that the approval of its granted is for this event on the 4th of October only? Yes. Yeah. All right. And the points that were made earlier about their need to use largely the outside for whether it's food trucks or other types of, of activity here, the, the parking is going to be compromised in a significant way and it's being offset by the owners giving some reassurance that they are going to have people shuttled over to the event to make that a non-issue. So I mean, that's an unknown, we're taking them at their word and we're, we're hoping that that works the way it does. Otherwise, we're going to have basically chaos over there with a, a large group of people trying to find a place to park. Now, I, I own apartments over there for what it's worth, but I, I will, in my own way, I'm sure I'll be impacted, but I'm not making the concern in that regard. I'm just showing you that I, I do have a lot of concerns on the area of parking. I have concerns about the, the intent of this event. You, you want to have people basically have a, a good experience here, but it doesn't, for me, and what I've seen and, and just in looking through the 14 points that were raised at the public safety meeting, I don't think it's been approached in a way that looks like it's been methodically looked at critically to address hypotheticals that may happen. And so we, we can cross our fingers and hope for a, a good event and we can, but even if it does have a chance of going through tonight, we still have to have on the 29th of, of this month, an approval for it to be open for business.
From Plan Commission, yes.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah. So everything tonight is contingent on that being, being done. And there will be a, a chance to, to make some potential changes there if, if, if needed. And, and I, I do hear from people and I do hear plus and minus, but I'm concerned, I'm hearing a lot more concern than I am hearing, you know, the fact that it's not a big deal. And I want them to have a successful event. If it's not planned and thought through in a good way, it's going to be a disappointment, it's going to be a discussion topic and it's going to have some controversy. It'd be better for them to have this thought through in a way that's going to make it work than to, to try something that hasn't got a chance of, of being successful. It's an unknown until we let it, I guess, play out. But I will be at the meeting on, on the 29th. I think the unknowns and the 14 points that were brought here, I don't feel they've been addressed satisfactorily. And I feel because of this special event, the amendment that they're asking for to have allowance to, to take over a larger area outside than what they're, they have 1,000 square feet on a given, on a continuing basis, they can have outside interactivity outside of 1,000 square feet. This has given them a much larger footprint for being outside. And I think it's, it, I think it's premature and I don't think it's been prepared for us to vote in approval. So I would encourage tonight, on this topic only, to vote no.
Mr. Lampy?
All right, I'm, I'm going to drop the, the technocrat here a little bit because I, I think I got all the technical pieces down at this point. So to me, I'm, I'm very happy to see that we have some new business owners in this location. There have been a number of businesses that have been approached inside, outside the downtown. One of the things that we've been unable to do as a city really is to bring people in and see value in focusing on a river-based establishment. So this, this is a key, I think, for the city to be able to demonstrate that, you know, this place is going to get off the ground, it's going to do fantastic, it's actually going to use the river as an asset and allow us to hopefully build on this success story and move on to other businesses. I completely agree with the owners that, you know, a, a successful launch is needed to introduce this place, which has not been used in a number of years as an active place, to reintroduce this place to as many people as possible. And so I am very much in favor of making sure that we support this as a city. In regard to all of the rules and regulations that they're running afoul, I think that is potentially one of the issues that we have as a city, is that folks who are trying to come to us and do things run into these somewhat unexpected travails. They're trying to put food trucks up, they're trying to, you know, have a good time, a party, a one-time party, to get things off the ground and they are met with all sorts of rules and regulations that seem to pop out of the ground and restrict what it is that they're trying to do here. So I really want the council to take a step back, look at the establishment of a business here, something that's going to fill in that space. This place has been a business, it's been a thriving business for decades. So it's not as if this is a brand-new use for this area. I want the council to join me in basically celebrating that someone is doing something this positive in Watertown and is trying to get as many people to recognize it and make this a success as possible.
Okay, Megan?
Bartz?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Arnett? Wetzel? Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
No.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next, D, review and take action application for a Class B malt license from Pratham JSN LLC DBA, Super DBA, Super 8 Watertown, Heat Patel agent located at 1730 South Church Street, for license in the year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. And the motion has to be on past inspections and approved conditional use permit. Mr. Barts? Motion by Barts with those conditions?
Second.
Second by Blankey, I believe. Okay, any questions? Okay, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, E. Review and take action, application for a temporary class B beer license from Whitetails Unlimited, Watertown Chapter at Bensin Family Town Square for the Packer Party on September 21st, 2025, during the hours of 11:00 to 4:00. Move for approval? Motion by Blankey?
Second.
Second by Molenhauer. Any discussion? Let me take a voice for one, please. Oh, roll call, please.
Blankey?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Whetzel?
Aye.
Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Epstein.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next, F. Review and take action, application for operator's license from Brianna R. Jesse. Mr. Lampy?
Based on category five.
Okay. Motion by Lampy to deny. Second by Barts. Any discussion? Okay, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, under resolutions, Exhibit 9787, resolution approving amendment number one to tax incremental District Number Eight, sponsored myself in the Plan Commission. Mr. Lampy?
Approve Exhibit 9787.
Second.
Okay, motion by Lampy, second by Berg. Go ahead, Mr. Lampy.
So again, I'm thrilled by this resolution, in part because it allows us to attack a parcel along the river that would, you know, is prime for development. The other part of that is that this sort of, this is the first thing I had asked the city to do when I joined the library board in like 2017, is fix that little parcel piece over on the edge. So thank you for bringing that into compliance over so many years.
I'm not thrilled at all about the expansion of this tid to this property. It's unnecessary.
No more, we'll take a roll call then, please.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankey?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Whetzel?
Aye.
Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next, Exhibit 9788, resolution to approve the sale of city-owned vacant parcels, parcel number 291-0915-2132-003 and parcel number 291-0915-2132-004, sponsored by myself and the finance committee.
I will move for Exhibit 9788.
Okay, motion by Blankey?
Second.
Second by Barts. Okay, any discussion?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Whetzel?
Aye.
Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next, we come to our second part of comments and suggestions from citizens present. If you have the form, you can bring up, you have the forms? Okay, would anybody? Oh, well, we can just, if you state your name and address, you can come up and speak then, okay? Up to three minutes. I'll check if somebody wants to do online at the end here.
Hello again, Margarita Haas, live here in Watertown. So this is going to be a quick one. So to be clear, we do not have a homeless epidemic here in Watertown. In fact, according to HUD, Wisconsin has one of the lowest homeless populations in the country. We also have several organizations operating here in Watertown that provide housing for the homeless. The city also has a plan in place for a warming shelter, so I would think that someone who believed the situation dire would at least volunteer with the city, donate, or perhaps take the initiative and house people like others in town have done. But no, the representatives of building and welcoming Watertown insist that the only viable option is for the city to go into a public-private partnership with them, provide a space funded by taxpayers in which their organization gets to oversee operations and hire their own volunteers. And to me, that speaks volumes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in the audience, I'll see if someone online. Anybody online wish to speak? Anyones there? Okay, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Lampy?
Second.
Second by, second by Davis, okay. All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you.